Lord, will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance in the name of the Capitol?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes in the June 8 meeting.
Move to approve your minutes from June 8, 2020. Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes in June 28 meeting. Could you please call it over? Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of the bill of state in three hundred, an amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven eighty-six.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to accept the statement of bills in the United three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the statement of the bill of state. Could you please call it over? Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will request your comments in the public. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Erin Cheffering, 1701 South 102nd Street. I'm here today, I just spoke to you via email at times exactly those regarding the internet service that's available to residents in Edwardsville. My neighborhood is Second Street about a half mile from the highway, and the only thing that's currently available to me at my address and my neighbors is satellite wireless with speeds of about twenty-five megabits per second, and I cost twenty megabytes for about ninety-three dollars a month. If it rains, we got nothing. I feel like it severely impacts the quality of life in our, in our neighborhood and our city because people can't follow up online education, they can't search for jobs, they can't work from home, they can't do, have online access to medical care and secure banking and things like that, and I respectfully request that the city move into somehow making equitable access to internet service as something that EBITDA offers all its residents.
Thank you. I have a question on that one. Is Spectrum not available there?
It is not.
It is not. They have a franchise agreement within the entire city, but they may or may not provide service based on density too.
My neighbor requests that they come out and do a survey, and maybe I even do the survey, and I have a survey done, it's going to be over ten thousand dollars. Instruction costs.
I know we'll be talking on the side of your, on the terrace, so. Oh, right. Yes. So, thank you. And it didn't sound like that microphone was working again. It is not.
It's got issues that we're working to figure it out.
Okay, if there are no other, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consider creating, creation of a broadband development task force.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I will speak loud because I know this doesn't, for some reason, we worked on this today and could not get it to work. So, actually, our speaker during Citizen Comment is a great example. Thank you. I wasn't aware, per se, that we were going to have somebody here to speak tonight, but I think she highlights the problem very well, and it's a problem that's not uncommon to communities like ours. So, I know the council on several occasions, this topic has come up. It came up when Google Fiber was going to serve all of Wyandotte County, but as we know, it only served a portion of Wyandotte County. It has happened in other places. Spring Hill is an example where this has been going on. DeSoto is another example. So, I had just reached out to some of those places. Actually, one of the owners of DHC, Co. Honle Michael, which is the H in that particular business, lives in DeSoto, was part of their task force heading it up. Again, he's not a member of the City Council, it's a little project that VHC, maybe a member of the City Council, remember, he hasn't been, but he didn't do it as part of his business. He did it because what they found, which I think is likely here, is high school students who go to high school, the school that had internet access, they had high-speed access, and then they'd say, tonight's lesson is X, and they go home, and, you know, it's a video download, PowerPoint download, these types of things, and what should have taken two minutes was taking fifteen minutes or an hour. And certainly, as we've gotten into the recent pandemic, where people try to work from home, I think it's just exacerbated this issue. So, what is being proposed tonight is really a first step, and that step is creation of a task force, and really the purpose of the task force is, is this truly a problem? I mean, anecdotally, we know it's a problem, but let's put some facts behind that, right? So, let's find out what services are available, where they're available, surveying our, our people here, businesses and homeowners, and let's try to get a handle on what the problem is, if there is one, and then take that information and see how we can use it to come to some solutions. And again, different cities have used different models. Some have gone forward with a, what I call a utility model, where the city technically owns the internet service, right, and so they provide the internet, and they basically are the reseller of it. You have to be careful, and I should have mentioned, I certainly want to have our city attorney against us too, because it depends whether you're an internet service provider, you're a cellular telephone provider, you're providing television, and those types of services start to get into some legal issues. We're talking about fundamental internet service provision. You can use models similar to what DeSoto did, which they took it as an economic development model. So, what they said in their proposals, they went out and said, okay, for us to have economic development in our community, we have areas where that's not available, how can we support that as an economic development effort? In their particular case, they put funding towards it and said, okay, company, you know, they had a number of people put proposals, and they said, you know, we want to engage this and help you build this out. And so, the city basically contracted to have those services, provided the city also got connections to their facilities and anything like that. Spring Hill's model is a little different, and I haven't had time to really spend much time on it, but you can look around the country, and these are the types of models that are out. So, again, really the first part of this is, let's ask the question, what's the problem? How big is the problem? Where is the problem? My, my guess, and solely a guess, but if you're south of K-32, this is probably not a problem, because we get right-of-way permits all the time at the city to connect businesses and the business park from all the major providers through their parks, right? So, they're putting in fiber optic, they're boring, you know, putting conduits in, boring connecting for our business parks. So, my guess is we have solid internet provision. You know, recently, there was a tower, a cellular tower built up here, and we've had three right-of-way permits since that's been built to connect from that tower into fiber optics, mainly to get traffic, you know, people are using their smartphones, but at some point, you got to get it into a network, a fiber network. What we don't see is a lot of that happening to the north end of the city, right? And I think the example that was raised, I've heard before, where, you know, one of the, basically, I think we have franchise agreements with AT&amp;T and with Spectrum, names have changed over time, and they'll say, okay, we'll check, oh, it's a half mile between houses, and to get from the street back to the house is another quarter mile, yeah, we'll do it for ten thousand dollars or some amount that isn't reasonable for most people to pay, and there's not enough density to connect them, and our franchise agreement, like most franchise agreements, have some type of density piece in there. So, oftentimes, the companies would say, in order for this to be profitable, we have to have such density now. I think you could argue, you know, how long is the investment? I mean, if you're talking to the, to the companies that do this, they probably want to see their return in three to five years. I think if you look at, like, a public utility, I would never put in a water or sewer line thinking that you're going to, you're going to recover all your capital costs in three years, that's just, that's not a realistic capital return. That, but that's the playing field. So, again, tonight, what I would like to ask the council is to basically authorize the creation of this task force. There's not necessarily a formal process, but the mayor could appoint individuals to the task force, including the council. Again, my recommendation that at minimum, and we don't need a forty-person task force, we may have working groups that fall under that, but I think for certainly, we would like to have myself and Chief Mathies, and I say Chief Mathies because he's kind of our, he's our go-to IT guy, has really a lot of knowledge and experience in that area. A lot of what we've done in this community and in this organization would not have happened without his leadership, and he talks the lingo and the languages, so I'd like to have him as part of that. Obviously, I think having our city attorney engaged at some level, because she does a lot of work around right-of-way, right-of-way issues and that we talked about before, and, you know, the micro cells and all this stuff that's going on out there in the world, and how did this, you know, how did this work in that environment, or the conflicts and the legal issues that are in all of this? I think it would be nice to have, obviously, representation from the council, you all can decide, you know, no more than two, so we don't get into meeting requirement issues, but you all can decide how that might be. And then, certainly, a residential and a business, and it may be a business that already has high-speed internet access that is, is happening. Generally, when we talk high speed, the governmental regulation is twenty-five minutes or whatever that is, but most of the time, people are talking a hundred or a thousand, you're talking about gigabyte, right? That's really the kind of service gold standard that you're looking for, and putting in fiber, that's really what you're talking about. So, you're talking the Google Fiber equivalent for the, what you can get from your Comcast and your AT&amp;Ts when they're putting in fiber or other types of things. So, with that, that's my recommendation to you all. If you'd like to go forward, then give direction.
On approval of the, pending approval of the task force?
Right.
What would be your timeframe? Are you looking at reporting back every couple?
You know, we probably going to need, you know, kind of the first phase, and again, I'm using what was done in some other places. I will say, I spoke to Mr. Honle Michael, and he's, he's offered to come, whether it's to the council or to our task force, to kind of give us his experience. I mean, they're, you know, they're in the deployment phase there in, in DeSoto, but that's a, that, you know, they started that around 2016, 17 with their task force, so.
Well, they probably give us some things to definitely.
Right.
Help us through.
And I think he said there's things that if they started it again, they were different. What, what I did hear pretty, you know, was, you need to have at least this foundation, you know, figure out what the problem is, how big is the problem? I mean, yeah, we can make this just a staff-driven process, but I really think that it's one of those issues that encourages engagement and involvement from throughout the community. So, that's my, I would, I would say, you know, first report back would probably be two to three months, probably, maybe something in between.
Do you need a motion to approve it, or do you want?
Well, I, I think that would be nice, if there's a motion to create the task force.
I make a motion to create a broadband task force.
Second.
Either a motion and second to create the broadband task force, or another. My, my comment before we vote on it is, I know the league has been involved for the last several years, we've not heard anything this year about the broadband issue, but I think they were, their, their issue is more in remote areas in western Kansas, and I don't know whether this is a similar endeavor or not, but I, I do, I do know that they've got a certain amount of information.
Well, I think the issue is the same, I mean, if you take a city like.
No, the issue is the same, lack of service, but I think a lot of what was going on in western Kansas had to do with the companies that did provide the service who almost refused to do it.
Right.
Regardless.
But I think we have that.
Yeah.
I think we have that.
And what they tried to do is block cities from creating one of these.
They did.
Yeah.
Right. I, I did provide to you, just, and I meant to say, a couple pieces of just information called the Moving Forwards Act, which, quite honestly, at the time I put this together, I didn't know this, but the House has recently, I mean, it just said the House level, so you know it's got to be a formal process, but House Resolution Two that referred to as the Moving Forward Act, it's an infrastructure bill, but part of that bill is looking at a hundred million dollars towards broadband development, you know, to have a universal nationwide service. So, potentially, there is funding that may be out at this time. I don't have a chance to at any time on that, but.
There's a, there was an article in the Epoch Times this week, about forty percent of America through this pandemic that's been revealed, about forty percent don't have service to high-speed internet. So, it's really an empty school in business, working from home, and just as an anecdotal I have spectrum, and my next-door neighbor lives about two-hundred yards off the road, and they invested about five to ten thousand dollars to run back to their house. And so, they're, I think they're working off of a satellite at this point in time too, but, so, and that, that number seems highly ridiculous, quite frankly, especially with those poles already set all the way back with utilities on it, so it can't cost five thousand dollars to run a line back to his house.
That, that person that you're talking about said they would bury the line for them.
Yeah.
And they would let.
Right.
And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but we've got somebody that spoke up tonight, and I'm not asking you right now to be on that task force or not, but if that is something that you might be interested in, you might leave your name with Zach tonight, and that'd be a good.
Just to kind of cut everything kind of clean right now, I would, I would recommend it myself and, and the, and the council president, Chuck Adams, be on that task force. That's a recommendation. I don't know whether to make that a part of the, would it be necessary to make that a part of the motion? Okay, thank you.
No, sorry, I, I, I did, one other person I left off there, and I did speak to them, was the school superintendent, because this issue is.
You got it on there, but you didn't name it.
Yeah.
You said him or his.
Does he need? And, and so, I would say, if we're good with what we've recommended as far as people on the task force, that, that really is part of the recommendation, and who you want to specifically name. I mean, generally, task forces are appointed by, the mayor will appoint people to the task force. Again, it's, it's not as formal as a board committee, that we have, again, the co-ordinators as the process, so.
Anyway, is motion been made in second to authorize the organization of the broadband task force? Could the clerk please call it over? Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
I would say, if you have interest in serving, maybe the best way to do that, brought to the council, would be the mayor for them to reach out to you and express their interest and then to make a final decision.
Now, would I count in the no more than two, or?
Well, technically, I'll leave it, but I mean, it's not a council meeting.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a formal meeting with the mayor and two members of the council.
Yes.
I suggested to, but I, but, you know, you, you could have a whole council, it just then would become, not the community, it might have probably the public, but I mean, then you, you create a formalization of the meeting process that actually would try not have.
I'm hoping for your recommendation on that.
Okay. I, I'm happy how, you know, whether the mayor, two or two, from the government of the area.
Okay, so, we'll discuss that later.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, did we get the pro-call? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider authorizing mayor to enter into a public service agreement with the city of Bonners Springs.
As you know, this, this topic has been raised before, but it, it's become timely now, and so, I'll try to hit the highlights, but what we're referring to is that there is, as we know, property 110 South 10th Street, which is bordered on 110th Street, which is Edwardsville, but it's bordered, but it sits completely within the city of Bonners Springs. The property owner, which is Compass Commodity Group 300 LLC, is in process of plating or doing preliminary platting and zoning on that property, which they had gone through before, and would have zoned what they call I-1 in the property that, that under Bonners Springs, which is similar to ours, which would provide for distribution types of facility, things like we would see in our industrial property, and that, that's what we've talked about in the past. But we also have, since the time we first talked about that, the issue of reconstruction of 110th Street in Riverview, and a portion of that project lies, or will lie, within the boundaries of the city of Bonners Springs. So, as we were having discussions with KDOT, they're like, we'd really like to see an agreement between the two cities, even though Bonners is not contributing to the cost, one of the things we always have to agree to is long-term maintenance of our road to be funded by, by KOD. Well, that's generally really easy when the road is completely within the city limits. So, really, both communities have some benefit here, and when myself and the city manager, Sean Peterson, sit down, and we got to talking about, I kind of started off with a secret thing, and we said, well, wouldn't it make most sense, if we're going to put together an agreement, let's kind of hit all the topics that pop up, instead of doing sewer, and then coming back, talking about road, and talking about access, et cetera, and we consolidate this into one agreement. And so, with that, generally, we prepare the attached agreement. Now, there, there could still be some minor changes, which is why we said allow the mayor to sign it, it's the same with the same form, so if there's any changes to. But what I'd like to do is just really highlight the components of this agreement, and the questions we can answer that. I would note that we have Chip Cochran with RIC Engineering, he does represent the developer on their filing of this item, and so, he can answer potentially technical questions. I would also note that we have, from Compass Commodity Group 300, although that is addressed to both councils, encouraging their adoption and passage of this agreement. They, they have been, they're pretty to the agreement, basically the same kind of public one, but obviously, it's critical, it's critical to them to have roads and sewer and infrastructure if you're going to follow these problems. So, you have those before you. So, here's what the agreement does, and I'm not going through all the where, assets, and all the et cetera, but the first part is road and streets. So, what this agreement says is that basically, we recognize that Edwardsville is given three million dollars in funds from the federal KOD, that this project will cross city limit lines, and that Bonners Springs will provide, two, Bonners Springs will provide to KOD basically a letter or whatever documentation they need saying that they concur with the project and how it's going to impact that intersection, and with them, there's, there's the, it does say that we're fully responsible for that road project, which is what we've been doing along the whole time anyway. So, we did originally discuss the three cities, being us, Kansas City, Kansas, and Bonners Springs doing a larger project at one point, but because of just a variety of things, different needs in the various communities, people at Bonners Springs had an SDP project they were pursuing, Kansas City, Kansas had SDP projects they were pursuing, we basically submitted this one on our own. In reality, it may have worked out better, because when we went through the process, they basically said, well, we'll only take one project for an applicant, and an example in Leavenworth County, the county submitted multiple applications, but they were by city, so they did one for Baster, and they did one for Leavenworth, and then they did some county ones, and they said, you got to pick one. So, in that particular case, for example, those other cities didn't get their projects put to the top, because they were numbered three or four down the list, and the county had to choose, and really, I don't think that was the intent, but that's the way it fell out. So, anyways, we've moved forward with the project, we've always moved forward with the project, as I was funded and engineered, we've taken full responsibility. The second area is around zoning and planning. Obviously, this property, you know, resides within the city of Bonners Springs, and have the authority to zone property in their city limits. We certainly have, you know, given comments on things of that nature when they're joining our city, and likely, you know, if we have something, they might say the same thing. But what we have agreed to here specifically is the needs for right-of-way. So, we know we need right-of-way on 110th Street, we know we need right-of-way on Riverview, probably the right-of-way on Speaker Road, whenever it's plotted, that's on the south end, because right now, there's only twenty feet that's on the Edwardsville side, and then there'll need to be some type of easement for sewer, wherever the sewer may go. I can say, and, and, I can confirm that the developer and the preliminary plat have made these right-of-way, as part of their plat, and they have indicated they're willing to donate the right-of-way as necessary for the project going forward. So, I, I think we have those things set up, ready to go, subject to them being able to move forward with, with the project as far as the plat. Storm sewers, again, it's all inside Bonners Springs, for the most part, the storm sewer all goes towards Mission Creek, and they'll have to meet the standards. We use the same standards, basically APWA 5600 kind of the section, that's the stormwater sections. We're all regulated under the EPA for stormwater issues, so there's really no issues as it relates to storm waters that we foresee. If those things come up, you know, again, we would utilize the same kind of standards as to how we're going to address stormwater on that site. Obviously, it'd be based on what's built there and, and what type of stormwater regulations. We'll have to have, I'm sure, some form of detention, and if I recall right, they're showing that on the preliminary plat, there's already, out of the lakes, parcel is there, it's an angry storm. From our side, and this is probably the one that, that we have the most interest in, is the sanitary sewer. You know, in that area, as, as the ground flows, you would go basically southwest to Mission Creek, go Mission Creek south, down through Lake of the Forest, and then down and go to, you know, river to, to the treatment station there. You know, that's kind of the grade of the land, just like it wasn't really feasible for us to go construct all of, of, that's creek, in this case, it doesn't really make sense either. So, the suggestion is, and what we're proposing, is that we would service that parcel of ground, we would provide up to a hundred thousand gallons a day. What that would allow for is the type of project that they've been talking about, again, for your, your commercial, your commercial industrial. But it wouldn't support a single-family residential, it wouldn't support multi-family, just because it would be more than, you know, more capacity for those types of things. So, I wouldn't say it wouldn't be any, but that's not the plan, that's nothing that's been purported, that's not the drastic for zoning-wise, so they give you an idea to, to compare that to what we have capacity for. The city, when it agreed with the UG to connect to their system, through what we call a Little Turkey Creek system, one point five million gallons, we have an additional one point five million gallons that goes through Vets Creek. So, just to give you an idea, you know, that three million gallons of total capacity into the treatment center, the treatment side of Unified Government. Today, the entire city that's on sewer all goes through Vets Creek, so everything from the schools to the subdivisions, business park, to K-32, every, mobile park, everything, we send about two hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day on average through that. We send about 280,000 gallons a day, on average, through that system to, over to the treatment plant. So from a capacity standpoint, we are not talking, "Oh, my God, if we do this, how will we ever serve the rest of the community?" It really is a fairly small amount, and probably won't even use this amount of capacity for those types of services. So there's that. So we would agree to be the provider of the sewer. We are saying, "This is how much capacity..." Bonner Springs would have to agree to pay for, which would be through the developer, to bring it to a point of connection. So they have to get from that property to a point of connection. So where's the point of connection? Somewhat undetermined, because there is the potential that it could pump to the north and connect into the existing sewer system up there. But the developer also owns property in Edwardsville, that's to the south of that, kind of south and east of there. And so discussions have also occurred about, well, instead of trying to pump north from inside of 160, what if instead we let it gravity flow to will over towards Betts Creek, and then put the lift station at that location and pump it to the north of that one, which then opens up more property in that sewer. So the positive of the sewer system is it actually may open up several hundred acres that could be served by... Obviously, development will follow development patterns, but it makes that sewer available for both cities, right? So we're giving capacity to that property, but we potentially gain additional resources to have flow into the system. And I mention that because flow is really important in sewer. If I can design and build a sewer system, I would go out there, I would slice the pipe, I would hook everybody up, and I would have it at about 70% of the pipe, right? Okay, the pipes are circular, at the bottom, there's not much, the middle is the most capacity, and once you get past the middle, you start losing capacity, right? It's a circle, that's how it works. If I could build a pipe, put 70% of the sewer flow in it, keep it at 70%, never make it less than 100, make it more, we, the sewer system basically, would be so self-supporting and question dollars, it would be great. Unfortunately, that's not how sewer systems work, right? You often time put in pipes, and then things change, and you have to dig bigger pipes, or sometimes you build big pipes, and you don't put enough flow in it. You go with what you know, sewer is generally based on land area and type, so if I tell you I have 100 acres and it's going to be multi-family, you go to KDHE, they'll give you this little sheet, and they'll say, "This is how much sewer you need." Most of the time, that's way over the top. But that being said, this does opens up the potential for additional sewer capacity or use in our system. But Bonner Springs, through this agreement, would agree, for the 160 acres, they will pay for the related costs associated to connect to our system. Again, they will pass that on to the developer, just as we would do the same thing. Once the sewer system's in place, connected and operating, it would become our sewer. So we would take responsibility for the maintenance and operation. We would also build customers for the use of the sewer, just like we do other customers in the system. So they don't get to connect for free and then just use up the system for free. They have to pay, as we would require any other developer. If the developer today said, "I want to connect over here and get into your system," we'd say, "You're going to have to pay to bring it over." The development, the building south development, yes, we built the lift station, we made the capacity available, but they are the ones that had to extend the sewer, and not just for their use, but for all use in the system, right? That's upstream and downstream. So they couldn't just go, "Well, we'll put in a small pipe, and we'll go put a 4-inch pipe in, that's all we need." Now, if you're going to put in a pipe that's big enough to serve the area that we serve it, so nothing different than what you would do if it was okay in the city, just outside the city. Other than that, for sewer, again, we would handle the billing and operation of the system as if it was our own. They would be treated like another customer. So when a building comes on, there's connection fees, they pay their connection fees monthly, they would be on our system, they'd pay our fees, they'd pay our costs. Some of the other items, which are important, but maybe not as important as the roads and the sewer, public safety, this still is inside the city of Bonner Springs, they will serve it for their public safety purposes. So police fire EMS, it will be in their service territory. We'll treat it like we treat any other minimum agreement we have today with Bonner Springs. So it's their, it's their city, their responsibility to go there. If they need assistance that were available, just as we do today, we'll assist, but it's their responsibility to serve it. That is somewhat by their choice. I mean, we did talk about whether that was the best way of, of the maintenance of the road, so our part we're building, we'll maintain. The only question that comes in there, and that, this is one where we've been kind of working out the details, is today, the right-of-way line is the city limit line. So 110th Street, we widen that right-of-way line by 20 feet. The city limit lines don't automatically change, even though if you go read our right-of-way, if you read the city limits of the city, it'll say, following the west right-of-way line of 110th Street from this point to this point. But that's based on the date that that's created. So if you move the right-of-way line, we believe the best thing is to move the city limit line. It doesn't change any taxable properties, it doesn't take anybody's... Today, inside one city, move to that, we're only talking about the right-of-way area. And in many ways, that's easier, both from a maintenance standpoint, so you're not working in two cities. It's easier from a public safety standpoint, it's like, okay, well, the car is over here in the road, now all of a sudden, it's over here in the sidewalk, or some, you know, who's responsible, which fire department comes, things like that. So we think, especially in the roundabout, that just cleans up that area. But we're building that roundabout, we're building that road, we're building the infrastructure to handle that, just as we do any other road, as we do today, we're going to maintain. So it just basically talks about that. Access, so one of the questions is always about access. Cities control their access points on their roads. As we've designed the road, we've always assumed that there would need to be two points of access, both directions, east and west. So as much as you need it to be able to access into the Bonner side, the 160, you need to be able to access to the east and to the Edwardsville side. So you're going to have an opening in the medians that allow cross-access, something with a turn left and right. So we're noting that that's the access points, that's the ones that we're designing for and proving. If they want other access points, you know, we're certainly open to listen to those, but if they want a full access point, that's where the full access point is. So if they want to be able to come out of that property, turn left and go north, there's two points that have to be made. If those, you know, if those don't necessarily work, well, I mean, you've got a plan around it, and that's, you know, and it's the same on the other side of the grid, right? We're not going to have 25 or 30 driveways coming out onto our material grid, I mean, our rules say we can't do that. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, we know it's happened. And they have the same kind of rules, and there's a... As to access on the Riverview from the property, that's inside Bonner Springs, it's their right to decide how far from the intersection they want, how far apart driveways can be, how many driveways, that's, you know, that's their jurisdiction and control, naturally what it says. We control access on 110th Street, but it's our city. They control access in the Riverview, but it's in their city. We're just trying to put everything down on paper. The rest of it is really signatures and legal notice stuff. So that's the summary. Again, we have had discussions with them, even as far back as when we built the lift station, the mayor and I met with the mayor and the city manager of Bonner Springs. So when we built our lift station, knowing that there was going to be other areas that are probably going to go through that lift station, right? And that lift station is not built to handle everything. I mean, it's built to handle, you know, 500,000, 600,000 gallons a day, and as development supports more capacity, it can be added to. It was designed that way. What we did do to ensure that we had that capacity bringing, and we went under the interstate, right, and that was probably the most costly part of the whole program, we could have gone in and put in a 10-inch pipe and stuck through there, maybe 1/8-inch pipe, maybe two 8-inch pipes, but it would have been 1/8-inch pipe or something else. We elected collectively that we were going to go ahead and do one boring end of the highway, and we put in there a 24-inch pipe that gave us the ability, I believe, to put three 8-inch pipes and some smaller pipes, or it was two 8-inch pipes and some smaller pipes, so we could handle sewer, and we could also handle future data or other types of services under the highway without going back and drilling another hole under the highway. But that's, that's about $600 a foot, and as you know, that's a long ways across there, so it was around 310 feet total from end to end of the board, and yet the access is nice and wide. So that's already all in place. Someday, probably long, long from now, we'll have to lay a second force main on the north side of the road, and then we'll put one force main in, because you don't want to put much pipe in the ground that you're not going to use, number one, paying for it, and since it's long enough and doesn't get used, it's probably going to go bad. So someday or another, another line will have to be put on, put out there. We expected that, we planned for that, we have enough right-of-way for that, easements for that, pipes in the room for that, so it'll be a relatively, I say relatively, low-cost addition to do that, just like the lift station. We had all the pieces there, we would just have to add an additional holding capacity, really, put enough pumps in, that we could add one pump and upgrade the size of the pumps and stuff. So, again, the real purpose of this is to address both community needs. I think it's something that there's been a lot of discussion on, sometimes, but I think we've strayed from a good benefit here, which is to search both communities, and how can we be partners against development, who may be on the other side of the line, possibly help development on our side of the line, because if there's, you know, if there's a company sitting there and they need someplace to go eat, or if they need a place to stay, or they may need other services, or potentially they want to reside near where they work, you know, we also have property available for those types of folks. I do think that it's something intended for both communities, and again, we try to put it in writing, because that's really the best way to do these kinds of situations, with that matter on behalf of the answer questions. Again, I would note that Chip Cochran's here, oh, I was gonna say, my phone tells me on my car, I got it wrong, and if there's a technical question, I'm sure he can help. Again, we just received it today, but we do have a letter of support from the owner of the property for the terms, and quite honestly, all these terms impact that property.
Another question about the Edwardsville usage, did you say our city uses about 280,000 gallons a day?
About 280,000 gallons a day right now.
So I guess my concern...
But we have 3 million gallons of total.
Right, but when I'm looking at use, when I'm looking at all these agreements, we are responsible for all of the road maintenance, we are responsible for all of the sewer maintenance, we are responsible, anything should happen on down the road, that they'd be used, I mean, as it is now, we're not using a lot of it, they'd be using a third of what we're using.
Assuming that they get to that. So again, the way, and Chip made one, being an engineer and designing said, so when you design these systems, you often, quite honestly, if you looked at that industrial, and you went to KDHE, it'd probably tell you you need 2 million, 3 million gallons, or anything, they come up with some numbers that I don't know how to calculate, but, but in reality, yes, if they came onboard today and ran 100,000 gallons, and we didn't have any change in our flows, that's true, it would be, you know, 100,000 gallons out of 1.5 million. I will tell you, we're setting up a lift station today, that we're putting about 2,000 gallons a month through it, and that's because we put water in to flush it and run it. In reality, having flow is, is good, and actually, again, as I talked about, to a point, the more flow you put in there, actually, your cost per gallon goes down.
So would it be more beneficial for our city to have development and benefit of this sewer we put in to start in Edwardsville?
Well, it's, I mean, I don't know if it's any more benefit in the sense that, I mean, if somebody is there that wants to build and put in the infrastructure to connect to the sewer system, it's their, but we don't have anybody coming forward to do that particular project. And there's not, to the best of my knowledge, a project that's sitting there that's going to start, they're in the, they're in the preliminary plating and zoning phase, and so they, they need, really, what they need is a little source, so so Bonner Springs is saying, "How are you going to provide sewer service to this property?" And this is the logical choice to take there. Likewise, we do need the benefit of Bonner Springs as it relates to cooperating and coordinating on the road part of the project, so...
I'm just not sure that it is as beneficial to us as it is to them, if that makes sense, because they're benefiting by future, this sewer usage now, us paying for every bit of maintenance, or if a pump goes out, if something happens, it's on us completely, not a percent of percentage to them in this. The roads that we're negotiating, and they're in the right-of-ways, all future maintenance is on us, and so I'm just not sure that it's giving our city a fair shake on that.
Well, and I would liken it to this, it's just as, we're pumping, so we're taking that sewer and we're putting it into a line that's owned by the city of Kansas City, Kansas is sending it to their plant, and yes, we pay, we pay the cost of what we send to the plant, and they're going to pay the cost of what they send to the system, but we didn't pay to build the waste part of the plant, right? I mean, we're...
Right, but I'm not looking out for Kansas City.
No, no, I understand.
I'm talking about Edwardsville.
You got to, because that's where it's going.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, at the whole... If a pump goes out or something, and they're using about a third of our utility, then all of that is on us, and I'm wondering if we might just have a little bit more...
I think your, your point is, is that the capacity there is 1.5 million, so they're not using a third. They're using a third of what we currently use, which we don't even use that.
Are we using, are we going to be using that lift station?
We're, no, the lift station, LTC lift station is today, basically, has no flow, has no flow to it.
So, so we're talking about hooking into an existing station that we are using 280,000 gallons.
Yeah, the one to the south is, and this flow won't go to that. It doesn't, it won't go through that.
280,000 is all on the south side of the highway.
I was just trying to give you an idea that we have 3 million gallons of capacity, and if you think about what we have today built in fire, and if you think about what's likely to be built, it is, you know, never say never, but for us to get to near those capacity limits of those two systems would be an astronomical change in what water...
And my concern isn't so much that we're going to be over capacity and won't get the development that we're looking for, as much as all of the responsibility being on us.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the way, I mean, it just is our customers today, right? I mean, we have moved from, which we should have, or we've never been there, right? So our sewer debt is paid for from the sewer system, right? So we take, so the sewer system, we build people for sewer, and the debt portion of that, we transfer from the sewer system to the, over to the debt to pay for that share that's debt. No taxes, so the taxpayer isn't paying taxes to maintain the system. The system is like a separate company, the sewer system pays for it, so the people that will be connected to this, regardless of their location, will pay the cost that are associated with maintaining the pumps, paying the light and bill, budgeting for replacements, right, because these pumps are going to go bad, things are going to get in. That paid for from the sewer system, not from the... and things are going to get in it, that paid for from the sewer system, not from the general taxpayer won't be the one paying for the cost.
Right.
And what we, and what is typical, what is typical, and this is the policy the city will have to make, is you can charge a fee different for your different systems, and you can charge a fee that's different between being inside the city and outside the city, and this agreement says that. Right? So generally, there is a limit, I mean, you can't just go, well, if you're outside the city, you're trying to be, generally, it's somewhere between one and a half and two times what your normal rate is when you have a system that's located in one city and another city. Whether we want to do that or not, I think it's more of a financial decision of whether it makes sense. If we have three buildings sitting there, and they're using twenty thousand gallons total a day, it may not be worth a factor to try to charge up for those two fees. But the likely development that being proposed, had been proposed, is, again, more of your distribution logistic part, that that's what's being proposed. On the preliminary plan, correct, I believe there's five buildings total, and it's one point five million square. So if you compare that to our industrial park, we have, and I, it's all industrial park, we have about seven million square feet of industrial capacity, commercial capacity that we expect to have.
Right, and I understand that, but onto my, the next concern I have in that is, our industrial park is down here, which is best for our community. So Bonner's parking there is right at the entrance of our city, right? And so I know we have limited, say, in that, but have they, like, have, I'm just not sure the Fed is really benefiting us, so we're putting an access in for them, right?
We're not putting access in for them. We're building the road because the road is what we need built, and what we have submitted to KNOT to do. We're just outlining that this is where the access points, cross access points will be. They're put there because they make engineering sense, right? They're so visible...
So we're not taking any access, no curves or anything?
We're not doing any dry curves access. The road will be curbing gutter, if it's some future, if that's where they need an access in the future, then they'll come back and get an access permit, we're just telling you this is where it's at. And any cost associated with building those would be solely responsible to the property owner. We're not putting in, the only driveway we're putting in that goes to that power is the existing residential driveway, which we're required to rent. Now, we are extending it a little bit further, and maybe they come to us and say, this is more imminent development, then we're okay not doing that, but we wanted to build the driveway, the concrete to the top of the hill, because I don't want gravel washing out into our road. And we did the same thing on the other side of that property owner, said, we could have just gone to the right of way, that's what we're required to do, but we said, we're going to go to the top of the bridge on those properties, and we're getting gravel coming out on the road, as you all see it, and, you know, they get some road, and we have to go out there and try to clean it up.
Right, well, and then on public safety, is it likely that that Bonner's going to be our fire and police if there's a call out? I mean, I just feel like it's likely we're going to be the ones showing up until they get their takeover. You know, I mean, it is what it is, and so I'm just, I personally, and I feel like, and we've talked about this as a group before, with the sewer hookup, we would have liked to see a little more give on their part for all the benefit that they would be getting from it. And I don't know, I mean, I'm the only one who's asking a question, so I don't know if anyone, if everyone else is fine with it, but I would just personally like to see a little bit more benefit on our side of it.
Here's my two cents, and it is kind of a chicken and egg type thing, because what happens on that side, and you can't hardly develop or market that ground very well for potential use when someone comes in and says that you don't even have, you don't have sewer access. You know, no, they're going to turn around, they're going to say, well, good luck, when you get that, let us know, and we can make potential recovery. Now, what, you know, what we would like to see, you know, we can't dictate what Bonner puts in on their side. I would hope that they're not, at some point, maybe the logistics department falls through and it becomes a death and ball dump site, or, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want, hopefully that never would happen, and I don't know what recourse we would have in that if that was to happen. Because if that was the case, I would say I don't want to serve a dump. But just like you said, the services, the amenities that we're going to be putting in on our side, gas stations, restaurants, hotels, those types of things, that's where we're going to reap the benefit of what goes in on that Bonner side, that's how I feel, that hopefully they're stopping at our fuel center, they're buying their lunch in Edwardsville, they're stopping at a fuel center in Edwardsville. So unfortunately, it's not in our city, and, but I understand what you're saying. Now, as far as the public service portion of it, you know, they'll be dispatched, I mean, and that's going to, and you're going to correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, that would be on our department to decide to jump in and interfere, really, which I don't think we would, to run up there and go get involved in their call, you know, just because we're down the street. That's Bonner, I mean, if there's a domestic violence call comes out in Bonner down on K-32, and we're just down a block away, we're not going to jump over there and go handle their call.
Fire me in this.
Well, I don't know.
No, there's mutual aid, right? Be on them first, if they don't make the response, just like downtown here, we go far and we'll sit out in Bonner, be called here, it's not a first, first response, just because of the location, that still serves a hundred percent of Bonner, and then when their resources, either determine they got a fire or a major medical emergency, or they are tied on something else, when they call for mutual aid, then as we report to our fires.
And I, and I would never, never, ever hope that we would not respond to something like that. You know what, a building that's on fire, and we go, well, you guys got to respond first, that's not what that is all about. We take off and everybody goes and helps.
That's what I was thinking, like, if there's a medical or interior fire, not like a traffic, you know what I mean? But if there's a big emergency, it's likely, we're going to get there, you know?
Well, our process today, relative to police there to fire, you know, that's right, so, correct me if I'm wrong, if there is a, if they tones out as a structure fire today, regardless of Edwardsville or Bonner's, we operate in the same radius system for that, both departments start the response. So it's in Nog Springs today, and they got a call at the YMC for a structure fire, we're heading that way. They get there to say, they were doing a cooking demonstration, and no problems, we turn around and come back. And when we get a call for a structure fire in the industrial park, they're heading our way. I mean, that's our, that's our mutual aid. Typically, on ambulance, is they, you know, they have people that are stationed on their ambulance. If they get to where they can't respond, then dispatch will then say, you know, we contacted them, or they call and say, hey, look, we got both units out, send mutual aid. That mutual aid, depending on location, it could come from Kansas City, Kansas, and it could come from MedA. We did, we did mutual aid for MedA, we did mutual aid for KCK, we did mutual aid for Bonner Springs, so it's really a dispatching thing today. The initial call, I mean, if six nine zero South Fourth Street, or, you know, pick a, pick a site that's Mr. Malott's house, right, he's almost on the border with Bonner Springs, and he calls for a medical call, we're going, we're the ones that are being called for, even though their fire station may post their unit, it's just how the dispatching system works here, we don't do, as Chip said, we don't have an automatic dispatching system. Some places do, Johnson County does that with their fire system, I believe, so they look at an address and they look at the places that are available, and that's the initial response, and then whatever city it's in, obviously responds as well, but if I'm, you know, a quarter mile away from the Marion Fire Station and the call comes out, but I'm actually in, you know, Mission, Kansas, they're going to send that Marion station there until such time, whatever, so we just don't, we don't use that system for ten. We do have an agreement on certain types of calls, structure fires being the key, that when those calls come out, they get dispatched, you know, to both departments, so to the group, I say the routine calls, wherever those are, you know, we have a medical call, a nursing call. They're not, they don't, they don't even necessarily know that unless they're listening, right? They're not dispatch advice person, so. Quite honestly, they're probably, they may be quicker to that site up there than we are in reality, where their fire station is, they may be quicker to hop on the freeway and come around that way.
To change the topic just a little bit, have we secured the right of way from Compass Commodity Group 300 on River View and 110th at this point in time?
It is not signed, but we have their commitment for all three parcels.
Okay, and they are donating that right away?
They are donating the temporary and the permanent needs of the just.
Okay, and what about the, across from the entrance to their present development, they're planning a road to go to the east, and utilities to go to the east, is that part of?
Yeah, that's not part of this.
That's right. But that would have to happen in order to get a sewer over to their property, correct?
If this, so our sewer plan is that if the connection's on that far west side, then they would have to extend the sewer, they would have, they own the land, they would have to provide these sewer easements, which, again, this agreement says any sewer easements required will be, you know, be required from the property owners to do it that way. So that's the pointed connection, yes. Again, there have been more recent discussions about the potential to, instead of pumping it north at that location, I mean, at some point you've got to pump it if you're going to tie it into the district system, would be to place the lift station closer to Bets Creek on the property that they own, which is about four hundred and twenty-something acres, the law will refer to it as the Osmonds' property, basically downed by 110th Street on one side, somewhat 106th Street on the other side, in there, so there is discussions that they would like to see that developed. Likely of residential uses, which is what the complaint calls for, now, there's no claim to have been filed, there's no, you know, like I said, there's a commitment to do that, you know, and obviously, like all development, it has to, you know, it has to make sense, right? I told you that, that there's a number of potential possibilities to enhance our residential housing, whether it's from that developmental or other development, is that a recent...
It looks like we're basically committing about eight percent of our capacity on the north end.
That's on the max, I mean, doesn't necessarily mean no use, right?
Right, but we're basically committing that, and that's the number we have in the document, which freezes them at that, so it really does limit them to what they can use the property for under this agreement. The other thing I have a question about is, on item number seven, it talks about realignment of city boundaries?
Yeah, the discussion there, and I will say there's still some discussion about this, but I think it's not as clear by, probably clearer to me than maybe to the, I'll put it that way. So the concept is, the way the city, so today, the city limit lines run up, you follow 110th Street, it's the western boundary of 110th Street, and then it goes straight up to the north boundary line of River View. And then it goes back to west, and you get to 118th Street, and then 118th, you get back to 7th, right? What the suggestion is, because we're going to be changing those right of way lines, and everything is dedicated to the right of way line, so if I had moved that right of way line, the north, south, right, west, I didn't want to continue to go straight up, because what I end up doing is getting into the, into the roundabout intersection, and you end up with a portion of, you know, two thirds of the roundabout in one city and one third in the other, and not that that doesn't happen, but it would make it much clearer to say, the roundabout is in Edwardsville, right? And that includes the raised approaches, right? So if there is an accident, if there's a maintenance issue, if there's anything like that, we're not saying, well, okay, we need this, we need, and trying to figure that out later. Just put the whole thing in one jurisdiction, if there's an accident thing inside the roundabout, we know who's going to get it, right? We just clarify. If a curb needs to be fixed in there, or a sign gets knocked down, we know where that's at. It is, I know it probably doesn't sound like a good thing, but when you get into some of these right of way city limit alignments, and you're trying to figure out where the sign is, where that works at, it can be a challenge. We had that on 110th Street, so technically, the right of way, the city limit lines is at the right of way line. But the median that's up there on 110th Street is slightly south, I think, of the right of way line, but then there's some sidewalk and curb and, you know, going over the bridge, and so literally, we all met out there, City Kings and Kansas, KNOT and us, and said, where, who's going to be responsible? We said, okay, when we're mowing, we're going to mow all the way up to the on and off ramp, even though technically that's in KCK and some of the KNOT runway. We're buying mowers already there, we go another twenty or thirty feet, doesn't make sense, not to do it, instead of have the grass, and, you know, KCK said, we're responsible all the way across the perimeter to KNOT, said, we mow, all we're going to mow is the on and off ramp, right? They're only going to mow what they're going to mow, there's not doing a lot of negotiation happening, but... So just trying to set our city limit lines to follow the right of way line, similar to how they are today, but specifically to make sure the roundabout, and again, I use that being the roundabout and the approach is the raised median, is all in one location, because when you go to maintain in the future, if I'm taking the plow, if I'm replacing pavement, that's where the point is, that's how it makes sense.
Well, I would really like to see that line move on the south side of River View, that's presently on the north side of River View.
Well, it will be on the south side, so as you come around the curb, you'll be on the south side, and then you'll go back up and connect with the existing right of way.
Right, well, right now, the green line, I think, is the municipal boundary, and it's on the north side of River View.
Right.
It'd be really nice to have that on the south side of River View.
Are you starting off with all of River View, all the way to 118th?
All the way to the end of our, I guess, our city limit is down at the bottom of the hill, isn't it?
Well, our city limits, so we go to 118th Street, River View, so right now, all of River View, River View the road, the right of way, is inside Bonner Springs. We don't want that, because we don't want to fix the road.
Well, I understand that, but I also, I also think that if we're going to serve, if we're going to serve clients on that corner, and we don't have control over the maintenance of that road, that road could be left to deteriorate, which would affect our ability, our clients, our residents, our businesses on the north side, that, you know, if someone would choose not to maintain that road properly, because we continually get reports now, you know, from our residents, assuming it's our problem that we're not maintaining the road.
So just so you know, so this is what we're talking about, kind of north, south, right there. You're talking about from that, somewhere down this direction. I think that's a discussion we could have, we're assuming responsibility.
So are you sure what he's talking about, Mike?
Excuse me?
Can you show all this, so we can...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it the return road back down?
So right now, we come around and then go up and, so right there, so that's basically the end of the radius is for the roundabout, right? So right now, we're suggesting come up and then go over and then connect to the existing right of way line, right? So we're not, we're not moving that right of way line. You got it? So now, I think, I think that's a, that's a separate discussion, do you want to assume all or some responsibility for River View Road now? You know, you have in some locality, some cities, what... You know, you have in some locality, some cities, what happens is, and, and, so the section line technically runs down the middle of that road, so there's a section line. So, you could have the situation, and it happens in place, where the road is divided, right? So, the center line of the road is, is the city limit line, so one side of it's in one city and one side to the other, uh, where you put it all in one city, obviously, I, I think we would all agree that, that River View Road in its, in its current configuration is, you know, I would rate it in the, you know, probably the lower half, if you had a one to ten scale, I, I would say you're in, you know, a three to five scale probably, I mean, I, I'm not a road writer, but, I mean, it, it's not a, it's not an eight or nine, for sure, uh, you know, so, you're assuming, you would be, if you changed those city limit lines, then you would, then you would, you would assume all the related responsibilities, maintenance, law enforcement.
So, Mike, so, you were saying that as of right now, you, you get it about moving that line, making sure that they quite?
Well, I just, we just had some discussions about where, where would that, where would that, where would that happen at?
Right.
Nothing negative, just, just making sure we're on the same, it's a little hard to see on this, to be quite honest.
Right, I got, I got. So, what I'm saying, though, is expanding this gonna make that more difficult for them to understand? You know what I'm saying? If they weren't really comfortable with it before?
Right.
And I mean, I don't know their comfort level, I'm not sure. Um, I mean, it makes sense to us, I mean, in this room, we're gonna have an accident, there's no doubt about it, there's gonna be an accident on that roundabout, and there's gonna be maintenance required on that side, and we know that that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, it, it happens everywhere. So, how do we, um, how do we fix it?
Well, I think what we proposed is, is the, is the fit, right? Move, move the right-of-way line, but if that's...
Are you clicking your pen?
Yes.
There it is.
I just thought the recording might, might have.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm just being, so, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of how whatever makes it easy on, on us, you know, I did, whatever. Um, but here's one thing, now that we're at that, and there was some discussion a while back about that they wanted to design or help design our, uh, roundabout the, in the middle, and I'm just not, where is that at?
Uh, it's not included.
Well, no, it's still, it's still not included.
Right, what I'm saying, if you move the...
No, even if you don't move it, it's not included.
No, we're, we're talking about what would it, what would the interior of the roundabout just look like, mainly around Slade? At one point, we had talked about looking at a, if the three cities had made this a single project, was there some way to use that as a, you know, a point of connection, uh, you know, to kind of illustrate the three communities?
Sure.
If that's something we wanna do in the later time, I think that's, that's fine. If not, I mean, the roundabout as, as in being constructed, will, will have the curb, and, and, so it has two steps of curbs, right? So, there's a lay-down curb, and then there's, it's concrete, but it'd be like a stamped concrete, and then there's a raised curb, right? And the reason for the lay-down in that area is if some truck or something can't make it around there, because they, they can't drive, which they should be able to, with two full lanes, they should be able to do it. Uh, it's designed that they should never have to ride up on the curb, but just in case they're going through. The middle part, we are designing to be turf right then, right? So, we're not putting anything in the middle of this thing as it relates to the construction of the roundabout. It will have water?
Okay.
And it'll have electricity to the middle of it.
Available to, to.
That's it, right.
But what I'm saying is, there's no expectations from any other cities to think that they're going to assist us in our design of our, what we put in the center of that, correct?
I think that's correct, yes. I mean, we, our position has been, if we're funding and building and doing, then that's a decision, and, and for most parties inside our city limit, and even today, that, that would be a decision.
And, and not that if there was an idea that they had, that Bonner had, that we liked, and we, and we could, you know, it's not, but, I mean, ultimately, the end, the end of blessing is on, is on Edwardsville, we're working. Um, I, I mean, I, I think that we knew all along that this day was gonna come, that we, we have, um, need to, um, talk about this sewer, um, serving that, and I don't think that the Bonner project can move forward in any way at all without some sort of clarification on, on sewers, uh, because if not, no one's ever gonna step up and, um, say, well, maybe if you get sewers down the road, we might come back to you, or, or, this is a step forward. I do have one, my final question is, is there a timeframe on this real serv letter?
I think they needed...
No, 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 no.
Oh.
An end date, uh, uh, an expiration.
Uh, we haven't really had a...
I would like to see, I would like to see a sunset date put in it.
And is it tied to any specific project or developer? Or is it open-ended, where another one could come in later if, if they don't go for it?
Again, that's, it, it, to me, it's, it's not our city, I mean, we're, we're allowing, and that's where I was getting at, if this project, or what's proposed right now, is, fails or doesn't happen, and in three years, five years, whatever the sunset is, comes back and it says, hey, here's what we wanna do now, we've decided that we wanna put in whatever that we don't, that we don't like on our side.
As the landfill.
The landfill.
Right.
I mean, does that change then our opinion on whether we serve them sewers or not? You know what I mean? Not to feel like we have their thumb, our thumb over them, you know, 'cause I don't want that, I don't want that feeling from Bonner to feel that way, but...
Do this begin with our state?
It, and, and...
It is a, I mean, I mean, the challenge there, relative to an agreement like this, is you have these other components in there as well. Uh, I mean, the sewer certainly is part of any development deal, uh, and I, I guess it, yes, you lose some control, but you don't have control, I mean, I'm just trying to play, right, I mean, zoning, zoning is zoning, right? Just as we could, we could build something on the opposite side of the street, that, somebody doesn't like, I, I will say, I was in another city nearby here, uh, early in my career in Kansas, and same kind of issue came up, and the property on the other side said, well, I don't want them to put, and then the case, it was, uh, many storages, and they said, we don't want that, and it's like, but they wanted to have, but they had their, it's kind of a unique thing, they gotta have their own zoning, but we used to have, uh, joint, a joint zoning board for that area, but they didn't want to be part of that, because they didn't want, want, they didn't want our side having it put into the zoning process, and so the board failed, but then they wanted to turn around and say, we wanna tell you not to do this? Well, the way the world works, good matter otherwise, right, uh, is, you know, zoning is bounded by the city limits, uh, you know, I, I think that, uh, you can't ever say what the future will be, but, uh, you know, sure, something could go there, we don't like, or something, you know, but a great thing too.
We shouldn't be selfish on our part.
Right.
Because we can put in, right now, we don't gotta ask them, did we?
Right.
You know? We have, and, and we can put in what we want, they can't say a bad thing about it.
Yeah, well, actually, this is the, really, the only control we have over is the quantity, and so we're not putting, we're not giving them a quantity that they could put, fill a whole place with apartments.
Right.
And so, um...
And that's why we limited the capacity, right? So, in reality, uh, you know, if they built 1.5 million square feet of logistic land, and, and, you know, and we're talking buildings, let's just say, that are in the, uh, 250 to 500,000 per building, right? I mean, something like that, if you think about the water flow that goes into those properties, you might not hit 50,000 yet, right? So, I mean, the 100,000, and, and, yeah, we have an engineer here that could probably answer that, and I'm sure he would, I mean, to build a subdivision, a residential subdivision, a multifamily housing, et cetera, you're not gonna get anybody that's gonna develop that property with that limited capacity of sewers. And I can be fair, Chip, that was good, I mean, he designed subdivisions and partnerships.
Well, I mean, this is, we only say that.
But, Mike, what the, the sunset clause, for two, but?
Well, I mean, yeah, and that's why I, I did say in this agreement, right, is to, to give the mayor authorization to enter into an agreement substantial of this form, right? If there are...
Because this still comes back to us for our final approval?
Uh, I would say only if there were significant changes, so if there's something, so, for example, if you all wanna say tonight that, you know, we wanna add a clause in here that the development has to occur within a certain time, or you want the sewer, I mean, I don't think there's really a benefit of having a separate sewer agreement, because this all again ties together.
No, I just, I'd like to just say...
But something that bounds both parties.
A sunset that we can very easily be extended, you know, by just a, an, an easy mode, we, we, uh, decide that we will extend it for, maybe they're at that time, they're like, man, we're right here, we're gonna have this done in, in a year and a half after, and we can just very easily extend it.
Well, we, and I think what we did, right, I think what we did before, in the general will serve, and it wasn't quite to this detail, so when they applied before, we basically said we would consider, I, I think we've always assumed that, just because of the lay of land and everything, that, that we would service, I mean, there's always been, there's always been events potentially to it as well. So, I, I don't think it was the discussions that were been, we're never gonna serve you. If that's the case, I've never heard that, right? If we don't wanna serve them, then we tell them, we're not gonna serve them, and, and go from there, but I, I've never heard that. So, I think in the last one, we tied it to the application, right? So, Bonners Springs, much like us, so you come in and you file a preliminary plat, and typically, within one year of the filing of the preliminary plat, you have to file a final plat and, and a site plan. If you fail to do those things, whatever those timeframes are, then you have to start over, which is effectively what's going on now, is they didn't move forward from 2018 with developing the property, and therefore, they're now back in the same process, and we do exactly the same thing, you know? Somebody comes in here and says, I'm gonna file a site plan, or I'm gonna file a preliminary plat, fine. Now, once they file a final plat, right, once you tie up the final plat, that, that's, that's kind of the, you know, sets, it, it, what it really does is it sets your, what your rights are in the property. Once you have zoning and plat, so, what that says to the world is, these are my rights, right? I have this size property, it consists of X number of lots, the lots meet all the requirements of the city, this is how to, because on the plat, you have to show us, right? Here's all my easements, my rights of way, uh, details on how things are going to generally be built, like us, they also require site planning, which we do, so all of that's in play, and zoning says, I have this zoning category, I can use by, and so it ties that down, so...
With this, if there's a time constraint on it, it needs to be very clear that if they have development on it, that, that it, that it doesn't end, that there's not an end date, once the development's happens.
Oh, yeah.
There is no concern, amount of cutoff.
On, on approval or receiving of a building permit, I think the, the sunset goes away, I think, you know?
Don't disagree, 'cause we've, we've got a project on the other side of town that didn't have a sunset, and it's causing grief, so...
Right. So, where does that date, if, if I make a motion now to approve this?
Yeah. No, he said, if he makes a motion, you can make a motion.
If there was a motion, right, where, when and where does the sunset?
I think you would just direct us what you would like that, I mean, if there's a, some specific parameters to that, and then we'll have to incorporate, I, 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 I think you're gonna sunset, and, and maybe the city attorney can address this better, I think if you're gonna sunset it, do you sunset the whole agreement, or do you try to just sunset the sewer? That's the challenge, I don't really enjoy that.
Is that art? Is that art? You asking me?
Well, I'm saying, I, I don't know, I, what I'm hearing is you want some form of a sunset in this agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
And mainly related to the sewer portion of this.
I think just to the, yeah, the real serve, this, this, that we're operating in right now, that the real serve letter has a, um, a date, end date to it.
Well, I would say we would add that into probably a, another letter in Section 5, like a, as, we may renumber it this and say that, that, you know, the sewer is dependent upon, uh, you know, final plating and, and, or, I mean, you could plat and not have a building permit for some period of time, right? Uh, and quite honestly...
He's talking building permit.
That's one, one option, I mean, generally what, I mean, the...
The purpose more time.
Yeah, I mean, really, the, the, what the, what, what most landowner developers are trying to do is, they're trying to ensure their rights in the property. Again, the rights occur with zoning and platting, so if you're going to tie a date, I would tie the date to those items versus a deal.
Because their zoning, their, their zoning would have an end date to it.
They have a reversionary zoning policy, right? And we can find out, I, I don't...
It's two years, I think they can apply for an extension.
Yeah, so, so they do have reversionary zoning, we don't, we don't tend to use that, but, but really, zoning and plating, right, is, is what, is what ties that down. So, if you're gonna set a date, I would tie it to those dates, right? So, once final plat's set and it's zoned, I think that's your commitment, because if I'm a developer now, right, I mean, the current owner of the land may not be who actually develops the land, just, just as we've seen in the industrial part, right? I mean, we had landowners, we had people come in here before this body that said, I'm asking for rezoning, I'm asking for incentives, I'm asking for all, you know, they're going through the process, and we approve all that, and then they, they took that package out and went over to somebody like Jones Development, who, who built the, you know, the two newer facilities down there, and then he, he ultimately then sold that to, you know, he, he developed one side, sold the other one, and then all those have been sold to, you know, Real Estate Investment Trust two and three times over, that's, that's the process. So, the person today that owns this land may or may not be the one that ultimately developed, they're trying to get the rights set for the land, through the plating and stuff.
This is an agreement between two cities in regards to a piece of property.
Right.
Not a developer or anything like that, so, and, and just a final comment from me is, you know, we, we, um, we talk about the term unified government, and this is a chance for us to really have a unified government. This is a way for us to, to have all boats rise with the water, and us be a part of that, and so I, I see that as a real opportunity, and, um, they've always been good neighbors with us, and, and I think it behooves us for future development up on the north end, and , and our citizens for potential development and, and income up on the north end to, to help our sister.
Isn't there any chance, since we have 110th Street and maintenance included in here, that we can include River View maintenance on there for West of 110th Street?
As to us or them or what? I mean, they're already, I mean, they already have maintenance responsibility of River View West, West of 110th Street.
Do you wanna clarify that, Senator? Or?
Well, that's already said, that's...
I mean, we've got, the reason I'm asking is we do have Edwardsville citizens, and that comes to us a lot, is why aren't we doing anything around River View? That's not our financial responsibility, but we're making all of these improvements to, to our side of it. It would be beneficial if, if they also would have some...
I don't know that it is our, I don't know that it is any benefit to us to try to force them into doing anything. See what I'm saying?
I, I mean, today, the road, the right, the city limit line on River View follows the right-of-way, the north right-of-way line, so the properties, the homes and the properties sit in Edwardsville. sit in Edwardsville. No portion of the road sits in Bonners Springs. Now, would Bonners Springs be open to the city taking over some or, some or all portions of maintenance of that road? I, you know, I, maybe, it may not.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, and you say it's our responsibility to fix the?
No portion of River, so today, right now, River, the city limit line is on the north right of way line of the road. So the road and all of the right of ways, any maintenance of the right of way, the road, it's just anything of that nature is the responsibility of Bonners Springs, because it's in their city. Every part of 110th Street today is in our city.
Right, and that's why I said it would be, to me, it would seem reasonable to say we're including the maintenance of our section of this in this agreement. So it might be beneficial to ask them to maintain their section of the street in the same agreement. I, I just, ultimately, I just don't feel like we're getting any.
I'm sure I understand what you're saying, but it sounds to me like you want us to force them to fix the street, they can't do that.
Or just maintain it. I mean, it, it's in our agreement that we have to maintain our.
But this, they're, they're not in our city.
Then why are we putting that part of the agreement in here?
Well, I don't know that, I, I don't know that there's anything in the agreement that changes their responsibilities of existing maintenance of the road.
No, it doesn't change it, it just defines our responsibility.
Well, our responsibility for maintenance of this project is, is set forth by KIAT. That when we build, when we take federal funds to build the road, we also assume and say that we will be responsible for all future maintenance, which we will be having. The only portions we're really talking about here, so on 110th Street, as an example, all of the road, the curb, gutter, roads, medians, all that, would be in our city limits anyway. The only portion that really gets outside of that is the sidewalk and the underground utilities, which the underground utilities are responsible for, so we're talking, we're adding 20 feet, but the physical road, the curb and gutters and all of that, with the exception of the, there are some, there is underground pipe, some drainage pipe that we're responsible for, which we would be responsible for, even if the city limits don't change. So if we never change the city limits, we still have that responsibility, so.
Right, I'm just saying, since it's defined, and if not, that's fine, maybe I'm the only one that feels like we're not getting enough out of this, and that's fine, we can, we can move on from it. I was just trying to, to get us something.
I, I think, I think the area where I, where we're switching some maintenance is at the intersection. So technically today, there's, there's a city limit sign right there, right? So Bonners Springs would have to maintain from the city limit line, and we would take it from there, which is pretty much the intersection point. But that's the existing road. I think it's what I, what I'm trying to portray is that it's to our benefit, I believe, that we are responsible for the maintenance of the whole roundabout versus we're in charge of part of it, and they're in charge of part of it, and then when something happens, and we're doing, no, it's your responsibility, no, it's your responsibility, it just clarifies that, and so, and I think for, for, I think for everybody, and, but especially for us, is that some additional cost to our city? Yes, but quite honestly, when I'm plowing that street, guess what? We're going to go up, and we're going to go 110th Street, we're going to come down, we're going to do a circle around that, and more than likely, their plow's going to come down, River View, and they're going to go around that circle, and then we're going to go back to River View, because, you know, just stop plowing in the middle of the road. So I, I think if we're paving in concrete. All right, anyways, sorry. So I, I think the question is here, Mayor, is there a motion?
I think we, I think we need a motion.
Is there a motion approval, and is there amendments that you would like to be a part of this?
Okay, I make a motion to approve or authorize the mayor to enter into a public service agreement with the city of Bonners Springs with amendment to section 5A sanitary sewer to include an end date to the will serve sanitary sewer.
Before we vote, do we need an, an end date?
Well, that's a, I, I don't know when.
Well, I think if you guys agree, that will be put in there. I don't know that we need to settle by the council.
Well, I haven't, because that kind of leaves it loose. If you guys go decide, well, it's a 20-year end date, that's not, that's not in the spirit of what I meant.
I believe your spirit is to link it to the plat and.
Correct, correct. I mean, so if, and if I could say the end date to tie it to the final plat and, uh, final zoning and final plating of the Bonners Springs 116.
Within X period of time?
Yeah, well, I, I think that at, at any time.
Well, they've already made, let me, and I'm going to have to check this right. You have made application for preliminary plat in September, so it is already filed, it would be heard by them at their August, uh, through September. So there are August planning commission meeting scheduled for that, and a council meeting following that. So they need, for the purposes of them to move forward to that part, that will serve. That then ties them down to the final plat date. So once the preliminary, and I, I have to look at their dates, I don't know them off the top of my head, but the final, the, you have to file a final plat within a certain period of time of the preliminary plat. So I think if we tie those two things together, that we're, nobody can build on that land till they have a final plat. I mean, I say that, they couldn't, in theory, build one building out there without a final plat, because it's a lot of record. But to get any public improvements, to build other buildings, so, so the plat will dictate that date, and we can figure that out by looking at how they've got that set up and put a firm date in there. I just don't know it tonight, but it will tie to not longer than the adoption of the final plat.
But I guess, the way I understood your intent was, that this doesn't go on and on and on and on and on, that, that we have some kind of appendage that says.
You'll be getting that, won't you?
Like five years or whatever.
You'll have, you'll have that.
So let's just, so let's say they get approved, their, their preliminary plat gets approved in September. I believe their rules and, and is, they have from that date 12 months in order to file a final plat, maybe 24 or whatever.
Well, the only, yeah, but, you know, someone can come in with a revised preliminary plat for a different, because the preliminary plat is somewhat tied to their plan for the site, not the zoning, the plan for the site. So let's say their plan right now, which does probably place five buildings. If another developer comes in and says, well, really, we just want to do two buildings, two bigger buildings, they'd have to come in likely with revised preliminary plat, which would turn the clock, but you might be better off looking at a 60-month horizon, or at least having the council have the opportunity to re-review this agreement within 60 months when the site's done.
So that's, I thought that was the intent.
Something like that, because I.
And this agreement is.
If the change of preliminary plat.
This agreement is not tied to a developer, this agreement is tied to the land.
Twenty cities have tied to the land.
Yeah, so you're saying if the preliminary plat changes, then it resets the clock on the five year?
Well, no, I'm saying maybe you look at it, like a five year or 60-year horizon.
Total, total, and then come back where it's, where we're at.
They have the right to do it.
I'm okay with it.
I think that's long enough to figure out.
You're okay with three years?
Yeah, three years.
We will incorporate that in here and recent it to them. I mean, again, again, their, their council, to the best of, I mean, they, I, I, I mean, they know, the city manager knows that we're discussing this tonight, right?
Are they discussing it on air?
I don't know. I, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Uh, but, but that's, uh, but we knew we had some of these other things, and so we wanted to move this forward for this part of discussion. So I think Mayor, you have a motion in the second, and.
There are three different portions of, with the clerk, please, both of them.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Snight?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Kayla?
No.
Okay.
Moving on to the next item, the presentation regarding development. Would be, would be any questions? All together here, please.
Tonight, uh, we are, oh.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
How long would be suspect this to take? I'm just.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. I'm just going to use myself for just a few minutes.
Well, I'll wait, my team has it.
Okay.
The first, third. I want to go home at nine o'clock. Now, I used to have, I used to have a mayor that I worked for, and we started at seven, and we ended at nine. I mean, you're going, and now four, and you go, me too, but it didn't matter where you were at, nine o'clock, you went home. But then you get up at 5:00 AM, you go work hours until nine o'clock was, you had to work hours at 5:00 AM, so. When you're working cows, council meetings.
You want to go home at nine o'clock, get your.
Sex. All righty. We have everything.
My name is Chuck.
We'll make this, it'll be on the website too. Right? Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be available.
So anyways, we'll get started, Mayor, so go to the first slide, your controlling slide, yes, sir. I'm not going to go through all these, but as we've done for a number of years, when we start putting the budget together, and throughout the years, we look at items, we try to always come back to our, our success factor, critical success factor, being communication, funding, growth and development, opportunities, community leadership and ownership and long-term planning, so, which we discussed tonight. So, uh, next slide here, uh, just some things that we have done this year that align with those. Uh, as you know, we've, uh, done quite a bit of work kind of on new facilities and public spaces, uh, including the creation of the public cemetery parks and public spaces. We've worked really consolidated two boards into one, provided broader membership and more citizen engagement. Uh, we certainly have, uh, continued to work on the Quiet Zone project. I'll just say, I think we have just about all of the right of way, really there's no right of way, just temporary construction easements, worked out, I've met with a number of property owners that generally just had questions, but I have one tomorrow morning. Uh, we have started, uh, the survey work we've talked about, at the, the park, uh, potential area down here, the unused area that, that is part of the Home Home Park. As we've talked about, the River View crossroads, uh, we have significant improvement in the community. Uh, we submitted, uh, actually two STP projects, uh, one of those being the 98th Street. Uh, we've also submitted a PSP project that includes, uh, uh, kind of the entrance at 435 and within, those are made in sustainable places, they're smaller tiny ramps, so those are all moving forward. Next item, please, sir. Uh, some of the other, probably the thing that's taken just about every community, uh, lots of time, is our response to COVID-19. Uh, you know, we try to be supportive with the schools, our public safety have done a great job, all of our employees worked through this, uh, we were able to ensure that, you know, for everyone. Uh, we ensured, uh, that for our employees, we made a commitment early on, and we all supported that commitment, which was, all of our employees received their full funding during this time, right? They didn't necessarily work full-time because we wanted to ensure their health and make sure we had the proper separations. Uh, we did have a couple that, uh, were impacted by COVID, and we utilized, uh, through the federal government, they, they passed some extended or emergency FMLA. So, uh, it either paid a hundred percent, or in some cases, it was two-thirds, but even in those two-thirds, they were able to use other benefits to supplement that. So, uh, we extended that, cities had the option, the rest of the public safety to opt out. Uh, I tell you, many communities did, again, who did not. Uh, I think we have always, and this council has always had a commitment for our workforce and our employees here, and our employees appreciate the work that we did. So COVID's not gone, but we'll keep working, uh, we'll keep working through it every day. Just a, a quick recap, uh, this is really, uh, 2019, which you really saw through the audit anyways. Uh, our expenditures originally were, uh, we, we exceeded our budget on expenditures, and we exceeded our revenues, but we always assumed going into the 2019 budget, that in reality, we, we had budgeted for a slight reduction in fund balance, so we, we knew we were going to spend more than we took in revenue relative to fund balance. But overall, uh, we were within 1% on budget to actual, and remember, we do budgets in August, and so here, 16 months down the revenue. So, uh, if we keep our budgets within 1%, and even though we exceeded the expenditure by 87, we generated 71 in revenue, so we're talking about $16,000 on a $6 million budget, and I'll, I'll say that's a good day. So, uh, we obviously always like revenues to exceed budget, but again, we somewhat knew that going in. Uh, so, revenue recap, which really, this is, this is 2020, what we've been seeing, uh, kind of what we expect to see, obviously that will start driving the 2021 budget. Uh, I think it's fair to say in summary, before we go on, that we know revenues will be down this year. Uh, we will not be able to make all of that up in budget cuts, but I think we'll be able to make up somewhere between a third and half of that. And I think going into 2021, we will probably assume some flattening of budget as in keeping with what we're probably going to see in 2020, right? I don't, I don't envision some significant growth in 2021 as we sat here today. I mean, I think the economy and the market will still be impacted at least for some portion of 2021. So things like the casino, you know, county retail sales taxes, right? I mean, we're, we don't control them much, we kind of get those and bank on what we're hearing. You know, I don't think anybody's going to reject any county sales taxes increase by 10% or, or even casino revenues to get back to what, you know, pre-2011s. Uh, I mean, I'm surprised how well they did rebound in the last five days of, of May. I do, I mean, they did almost a third of what the typical month was, so they're only probably about 25% of the typical month, which, a lot of picked up, dangerous out there. All right, so sales tax through May, uh, as you see the red line there, uh, we're doing quite well with sales tax through May. Obviously, that really only takes into account through March as far as collections, but we get everything tuned up back. So we know that that's going to change in the next couple of months, but that's a good place to be setting to start off. So we are at about 40%, I believe, of our sales tax revenue, where we would like to be at about 22%. So even though we're off 1% or 2%, I think we are better than probably any other places at this point in the century. So as we move to our projections, uh, Zach's done a great job with one of these graphics, but you can see what each year has done. Uh, you can, you can see, we, we somewhat through May have kind of followed our trends, right? Our, if you look at our four-year trends, it's not off that much. We are obviously expecting the big dip to happen when we get our June numbers, which is April sales. Uh, and so we are projecting a downturn there, and then kind of a slow growth back. Uh, but we do anticipate that overall sales taxes, that we're going to probably be down around $200,000, uh, in 2020, and that will probably be our basis going forward. There'll be some recovery in 2021, but I would not expect us to come forth with a 1.5 million sales tax projection. Now, we may see something in this sales tax that we should be getting in the next week to 10 days that tells us something different. I mean, I, you know, we know things are reopening. We know that activities are happening. That's certainly bringing back some of the sales tax. But we also know there's some businesses that didn't come back. And that even though the businesses opened, the amount of producing is not the same, right? So they may have been open in 2019 and now they reopen now, but they were doing $100,000 a month in sales and now they're doing $70,000 in sales. So that will impact. So we do expect some reduction in that area. Probably county will have a bigger impact than local city sales taxes, right? How we're putting together. Gaming revenue, again, the casino has reopened. As you know, it was closed. So the month of March, they did about $17,000. We got about $17,000 worth of revenue in March, which is about half roughly. We generally do about $35,000 to $38,000. Obviously, zero come in for the month of April. For the month of May, though, we won't see those dollars still for another month or so. But based upon what the state put out, you pay in May, the casinos pay in June, the state pays it to the county in July, and then we get our distribution basically when the county gets, if that's the way it's supposed to work. So like I said, in the last five days of May, based upon what the state put out, we would get about $12,000, which is 15% to 20% of the typical month. They're operating at 50%, but everybody I talk to says that they're playing pretty busy at the casino. And remember, gaming revenue has nothing to do with the other activities inside there, right? So the restaurants, liquor sales, sales of merchandise. That impacts sales tax. It has nothing to do with gaming. Gaming revenues is slot machines and table games, right? And so, you know, I've heard people say there's a line to get in because they have a 50% capacity. State has to approve their claims. State says is what you can do. Those are state-owned casinos. But apparently, they're, you know, they're staying busier than I think most people are. So we'll see how that works out. Our friends over here in the fire department, I know there have been some, you know, we've had various discussions about ambulance revenue versus that fall and things. So we're probably slightly above budget. I don't think we really saw, or at least I didn't hear anything. We didn't really see any increased activity as a result of COVID-19. That is, we didn't see more calls for service than anything. We probably saw fewer, especially out of our long-term care facilities. Because, you know, they were trying as much to reduce those kinds of things, obviously, when they called, we would take them. But I think sometimes there are more transports out of long-term care facilities than are called urgent. But as of right now, we're pretty much, I'd say, on budget for the year. And that's what we're fighting. Even Ben Marl, who's our deputy chief, friends with the SN side of it, has been really looking at some of our contracts as it relates to collections, as it relates to medical directions, relates to costs. So I know that they're kind of going through that. We haven't really looked at that much since we initially went into the service business back in, you know, 14, 15. Court, while we had, we didn't have any court for over a month. Once we had it, clearly, people are paying their fines. It's, you know, it's certainly an area where you get concerned about, obviously, as people's incomes are impacted. And then they have something like a traffic ticket or whatever, and they're, you know, put shoes on the kids' feet, put food on the table, pay the traffic ticket. Most people, you know, are going to take care of their families first. And so once you see an impact here, we really haven't seen that impact. But I think our court tends to operate at a fairly consistent level. They don't go out and say, "Oh, they're doing construction on the highways." Five police cars out there driving by. It's not what our police department does or has never done. So I think we are expecting consistency in the area of our court. We have moved all the operations over to the county center. I think that is operating well. And we're seeing changes in that. It allows us to space people out. I mean, we, our last court today, we had 194 on the docket, I believe. So our largest single docket. I, now, being on the docket, people showing up and different things, but that's the largest court we've had since COVID. Typical dockets would be in that range, 10 to 250. So kind of back at a normal operating range. Just some other revenue sources. I would note that the IRV pilot, while it's less through May than past time, you have to take two things into consideration there. Number one, we don't always get IRVs on the same month every year. And number two, the amount of IRVs from one year to the other could be less. And so it would show that last year we got this amount of money. This year, we could get less. The bottom line is, we don't expect there to be any changes in IRVs. They're all being paid as they should be paid along with, you know, with general property taxes. So everything right now, we are seeing in positive. Franchise fees are down a little bit. Some of that, you know, closures, school closing, right? Things like that. So you probably have increases in residential usages, but some of your commercial usages may have been down. And of course, they use a lot more of any utility than a single residential. All things being considered, I think we're sitting in pretty solid shape as it looks at overall revenues. But we are looking at or planning around for the current year about a 6% drop. So somewhere in the $300,000 range of lost revenue. As I said, we don't expect we recover all of that. But even if we recover none of that, we would still have a fund balance in probably the 700-plus thousand dollar range, which is lower than we would expect. But why do we keep a fund balance? For the very purpose of dealing with the unexpected major events, right? Having a good fund balance is exactly... We've done exactly what we should have done. Y'all's leadership and the thought process and understanding the importance of having that fund balance is why we're sitting here today and not walking in saying, "We need to burn all the people for 10 days. We need to lay off 25% of the workforce. We need to, you know, not mow our parks. We need to close things, right?" Because of the thought, thinking of this group of likely leaders, the ones that come before you, understanding the importance of our fund balance. So honestly, we're right where we should be at that. All that being said, just in talking with the departments and looking at areas that we have, we do expect probably we'll be able to shave 2% or 3% from our total budgets, right? Some of that is, we have an unfunded position that we haven't funded somewhat. We didn't, you know, our public works director came in later than the first of the year. So that, you know, there's some savings. So we have some salary, salary benefit savings. Obviously, we're not running off to international travels or training. A lot of those have been canceled. So we're doing more local and online. And, you know, we still, cops still have to go through certain training. But we see a number of areas like that. We have some capital items that we can, you know, we can defer. So we hope to be able to recover about half of that loss through just budgetary constraints within our department. Some of them wouldn't have happened anyways. Some of them will just have to work. So I know our department heads have always been prepared and ready to do what's needed to get us where we need to be. So we've got two minutes. General fund expenditures. Good news is, we're already about 2% lower than what we would definitely expect this time of year. So they're already doing the things that we need done to help us get there. So you can see that, we'll keep working on that. The next couple of items, three, just kind of really bounce through. These are just really recaps from prior, from 2019. You've seen these before. I mean, right, these are just metrics of what we do. But our police department, you know, went, you know, almost 800 calls a month. Busy? That related in, you know, in incident reports, which is where these activities, citations, arrest. But I think the most important note there is, you know, we're solving crime. And a lot of that crime is solved by arrest and not what you want to see, right? So some cases will never get solved, you know. The people that got in my car and took the, you know, took the stuff out of my console because I'm not smart enough to unlock my car will never be solved. It will be found, you know. I mean, it's unfortunate for people to do that, but our cops do a great job of trying to solve crime and quite also to prevent it before it starts. Fire department, you know, we operate at around that 1,000 calls per year. As I said before, a lot of inspections, a lot of square footies that were responsible for it. Thankfully, we have a pretty new infrastructure in our commercial areas. So we have lots of buildings that have full function fire system, fire suppression systems, which certainly helps us. We'll reiterate, we went to ISO rating of two this past year thanks to Chief Widdam and people in his department. And then Public Works, which I, you know, I know Dusty wants to take responsibility for all of this, but he had no say-so in it. So he's got to earn his own way this year. But, you know, obviously, a lot of work goes over there, too. A lot of it's never seen. You know, you don't think about, you know, right-of-way in mode or making sure the trail gets taken care of or by the way, someone's got full of manholes, making sure stuff's, you know, it's floating away through the road. There's nothing left to ever do. And then, you know, we had a little higher snowbit this past year. I guess we'll see what this next snow season brings. And with that, you know, I think our focus in this budget, as shown here, is, I don't anticipate us coming forth with any new positions. Now, we have some open positions that we still need to fill and do that such as our parks and public spaces. We always look at compensation around that. And as you've seen, we know we're kind of behind in some areas when we look at that.
Is that the only position? Or you said positions?
I think that's the only one that's open and unfilled that I'm aware of. Oh, I got P D as one right now. But, you know, I don't see us coming forward. I mean, I'm not saying there's not needs and that we couldn't use those, but I think we understand the realities of the situation we're in. And so that's kind of where we're at. You know, as I said about fund balance before, the purpose of fund balance is getting you through the bad times, which means as times get better, you want to make sure to build that backup. So when the next bad time comes, and it will, that you don't put yourself down there where you have, you know, $100,000 and you can operate for three hours, four hours. I remember one day I went into, they said, "I think I have a problem." And they're talking about their electric fund. And I said, "Take the word 'think' out of that statement." And you're right, because you only have two hours of operating revenue to run an electric system. An entire city electric system had two hours of reserves. Now, they hadn't touched the rates in 20 years and they couldn't understand the problems. Said to the guy that ran the grocery store, "How good will it be if you have no electricity?" So I can save your rates, but you're not going to have a grocery store. It's like, how do I get on that completely and committed to talking about rates, right? And then last, property tax. We understand that continues to be a burden. We know what that is. We will have to look to see at our values. I know, you know, we're hearing, you know, people's values overall are up. We anticipate that that would be up. And as you recall, we have properties coming off of IRVs that have come onto the general tax roll. We want the new tax roll to look good, but we also have to always remember that as that comes on, you also lose the IRVs and revenue with that. So it's not a nice, easy dollar-for-dollar change. So those are the things we'll be looking at. So this really was just kind of the Carlsberg review. Really, the next several meetings will be kind of getting down into, down into the numbers. So we tend to follow the process we've followed in the past unless we're here. Otherwise, we have, I mean, it's really incredible to keep at the high level. It doesn't really matter how many debts you buy or pay for things. Can I get the job done? Let's make some matters, so stay focused on the importance because the budget is your vision and the community's vision for this community. That's really what it is. It's your, well, profit margin, if you want to call it that. How do you, how do you want your community to be? What type of services you need? Sliding over nine o'clock, I tried. There's no action this evening.
Okay, we'll move into advisory reports. More, I'm going to cut you out of it. I have to force you, but you...
No, I don't have any. I think I've already talked to you at home. We have a PSP application, a USB application. Did you work on River View? Continue to work on the Quiet Zone.
Thank you. Zach?
Just a note that we, our CBPS board made the, gave staff to go ahead and we've opened up registrations for summer baseball skills camp and competition that'll take place starting July 13th. And signups have started today and we are offering that if you sign up at Everville at no charge.
That's great.
We were able to crush the number. We'll get a little bit of it, but because it's not a full-fledged baseball league,
Yeah.
it's not a, it's not a big loss leader in that perspective. It's something that, as we wanted to roll out and alter the program, I mean, so... I don't like that.
Thank you. Chief Muthie?
We're working on the Justice Systems Grant, which is managed through the state, through the federal government. So the state has an allocation. Locals make application for that. Typically, equipment is the primary. One of our goals is to eliminate the need for hand-wanding. We have enough, as you heard, a couple hundred people in court in what seems, that looks like a large space, but it has to be controlled. We'd rather have some sort of walkthrough. Keep our distance, that sort of thing. As police, we're not necessarily a fan of the masks. It really is, you know, it's harmful to our communication, you know, right? Because it's a whole process. It's all that command presence. But in that instance, we pretty much mandate it. And, but we like to move away from that. a, 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 a,
a time for too many of them to bounce around on top of calls. Other than that, we promised this last month exactly we'd upload Tranquility Garden for the EMT and parent baby that were murdered in the North Station back in 2004. Their family had hit one tree and been up there long before my time. Gone with the final resolution, their convention, all that hits come up. It's just been lost over time. We took the opportunity to make it a corner porch on the station. Once everything starts selling out for COVID-19, we'll make those to the two families, give them some sort of formal dedication to it. They'll have their own.
We'll know about that before.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
I don't have a lot to express, sorry.
I don't have a lot to forget.
We didn't like volume.
I'm wondering how things work during here.
Okay, it works like this.
How it was the fish, that's all we need. He got to go on kind of his weekend with the guys before getting married here a few months. And supposedly we'd caught fish, so we went.
We went trapper fishing at some once. We caught, we caught a lot of fish. We had fun. I'm more serious than.
I thought you were gonna give us, you know, I come one.
Yeah, there was somewhere.
Somewhere about this long way.
Yep. But now we're trying to get the roadmap in my head, kind of look at some things with Mike and Zach too, with some different organizational things and kind of understand what's expected of me and what I can do for the place. And then continue to develop long-term, short-term goals. I think, I think we see some things that we can start taking off of soon. So I felt like I'm getting closer, but I think doing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we sitting with the road inventory? Was that completed?
So we did the original road inventory, and then Tammy updated it. And it used a little bit different breakouts. And then the county also did one where they, it's a truck and it's mounted and it's like the data. So we're trying to get all that together. Actually, I believe Dusty and Randy, that's on their agenda tomorrow to talk about how we kind of take that inventory and all that data and get it into, you know, make sure it's still being used. It's a little dated, the one we did. It still provides great basis, but we need to update the roads we've done and improved and we've worked and dates and so forth. It fell off the radar screen a little bit with the change of public works regular time. I do know it's a topic of discussion for tomorrow.
And then the, the road repair at River, or 102nd where the new pavement stops and the pavement started, and McAnamy did about half.
Yeah, I think they're gonna come do the other. I don't know why they stopped there. I got, I heard from Ben McAnamy and, and, yeah, today. So I assume they're gonna come finish the rest of it. They're like, well, that's, that's kind of an area that wasn't part of, we just overlaid it. Can't do half of it, not finish it.
Yeah. And I think you mentioned a couple meetings ago that we have, there's a timeframe. We have to have the trees out on the right-of-way for the River View project?
Well, we'll have to have that cleared for utilities, but we can't do that until we have all the right-of-way happen. So.
So you have, is there, so we're talking three months, six months?
Before the trees are out, the right-of-way will be finalized.
Yes.
Well, we hope to have all of our right-of-way negotiations done prior to July 13th meeting. For those that aren't, we will probably continue with the ordinance to move it to the next step. But to do it doesn't mean we have to go totally that way, but from timing. But that will then put us, process is about 60 to 75 days after the adoption of the ordinance that you can get through all of that. And we need to have that done by the end of September, early October. If we then get into the federal fiscal year, the retail funding is important to get that out, get that bid out in October, in a different timeframe, payday on schedule so they'll order in, I think, January and construction in March. So that's, I spoke to the right-of-way agent last week and this week, the number eighty-seven this week. So hopefully it'll be a wrap up on the work.
Thank you.
I didn't have much for tonight. I am not sure who's responsibility. This is how I think it's paid on, right by the bridge on 110th Street and I-70. The grass is getting so tall, it's hard for the cars to see who's coming over the bridge. So I just wondered if my Twitter request ended, run a media or something up there. So it improves the visibility. It's a little rough at that corner anyway.
It probably is. Our guys are pretty good about mowing what we're supposed to mow.
Yeah, it's all the way on the other side of the ramp. So like between the ramp and the bridge.
In fact, in Casey-K, they're supposed to take care of everything on that slot. But we'll, we'll, we'll get with them or figure out how to take care of it.
Have you had contact with the Union Pacific VA sign-on crossing? You mentioned sign-on crossing.
I have, I have reached out to them. Of course, the person that I reached out to is on vacation this week. So if I don't make it until next week.
Any update on the digital signboard?
Uh, no. What am I to do with this?
And also, I was gonna ask, Lisa, a few meetings ago, there was a man from Lake Orson Hill that was kind of concerned with the 5G program. Would that be anything that would be beneficial for internet? I mean, I understand the latest position on that internet because I went for years. I had Spectrum and AT&amp;T within 50 feet of my house and neither one of them serviced me until my neighbor finally got out of the service. And then I just kind of, I don't know, kind of deserved. I know there's still people in those dead areas that just cannot get it whatsoever. If you depend on a dish, you're all locked up. The street lighting is processed. Anyway, I didn't know what kind of prospect we had on solving that kind of problem. Would there be anything to unify the other to help us with that one since they've done a good, pretty good one? There's some agreements we can make with them. It's just food for thought.
Well, I know that we do, even the first six months when I came here, we entered into a franchise of a city that's CI Metro, who is an infrastructure builder for the small cell wireless. I believe they work with Verizon. But what they do is they put in the infrastructure and then carriers put in to bring it. I don't know how active they've been in the city so far, but I know that's the one that we do have. And then the legislation that just passed this spring regarding the electric utilities and other carriers being able to put in the micro cells and essentially hang on the strand mounting water facilities from their waters. So I don't know to what extent, but you still have to have a carrier associated with that infrastructure. So that's certainly the sorts of things that we can all look at. Certainly, if you could have someone in northern Johnson County wants to connect somewhere up in Casey-K and then come through Edwardsville. But those are also sorts of things that we can look at or that we can build on that.
That tower that they put up here on Fourth and 30th Highway, I haven't heard anybody say that that helped any of their reception on their cell phones or anything. It's almost like just a flyover, just a connection.
Well, that's what those, yeah, that's what those wireless small cells are supposed to do. It's supposed to take that from the tower and then build those little small cells that are built close together to extend out their network. So they, they can extend out and service more density. What's on the sub-towers is to do. So those are all things that if there was a carrier or something's going to be in the infrastructure.
I do appreciate the creation of this task force. Would you like to get that sound up?
And just for, because there are a lot of things. So broadband, you know, when we're referring to broadband, we're generally talking, I'm gonna say a wireless provider, the person that wireless, right? You're talking about fiber and copper, but mainly fiber these days, right? Because that's really what builds, so to speak, the backbone of it. I mean, you may still have cellular, but you generally can't get the same speed now. So that, someone with 5G is trying to promise that they can, they can operate at the same level as, you know, fiber optic, I don't know if they've included that yet. I will say, we do have an application. So a gentleman has acquired, I believe it's finalized or it's in process, the old tower at the end of Fourth Street down here. So he has purchased that and submitted, I believe it's been an SUP with the city, to be a wireless ISP. So, right, so an internet service provider. He's not in cellular, he's not doing TV, and he's not doing just internet service provision via wireless. So the way those typically work is you have small, a antenna's mounted somewhere on a house, and then it's pointed to a tower. And then from the tower, you know, goes down and goes up to a fiber speed or whatever. So it's, it's an alternative, but it still has the same problems that Edwardsvilleers have. And that is, it's still right-of-sight and weather, it works great on a nice, clear day. We know we put a tree or anything in front of it. And all of a sudden, you add storms and stuff and things that, right, that's the point.
Is that like shooting a nano bean? Is that what you're?
It's similar to that same tech. It's like, very much like that.
It's like nine-mile line of sight.
Yeah, I, you know, but, but that zone by the lane bank, as you know, it's been a mess, trying to get it cleaned up. And actually, if you notice that, we kind of cleaned some of it up because they had to climb the tower, which was always the reason we always stayed away from it. Because we said, we know, you know, that tower, you know, I don't know if it's gonna fall down. Until somebody puts an engineer's stamp saying that tower's even valid, you know, we're not going near it. But he's paid to have an engineering, you know, paid to have a review. And as it go for the UG lane bank to acquire it, they agreed to a price. And he's made application. And you'll notice there's a sign, actually, there's a sign down there. And that's the person, special use program for the provision of that tower.
Anything that'll help or sense of maybe it's.
It's all a private, you know, it's a private development.
You see a lot of those type things, like out in the further out country, there's a lot of those private ISPs.
Oftentimes, I'll work with cities. One day I was at, where they'll use water towers because oftentimes, they're the largest tallest item around. And I was, where I lived at one place, that was the only, that was the only internet connection you could get. We didn't have cable or anything else.
Margaret?
I agree with Jared and I think the whole council decided for the broadband development task force. I think that's, that opens some eyes and maybe, I don't know, we'll find solutions, but investigate further what we can, can do. I don't know who this is for, Dusty, Zach, Mike, whoever. And weeds and farms in the main entrance off of 110th. The road, the exit road coming out of there, there's a longstanding problem from the water. Comes down the road and gathers right at the bottom. And there's two potholes, I don't know, two feet deep.
It's a hotel room.
Yes. It is. Yes. I think Tammy maybe got estimates for it. I know they were astronomical, but for whatever the case, it is being something, you know, somebody's gonna wreck a car.
Get some pepper in there.
And I know there's a list. I know this doesn't take, I just didn't know if you were aware of that. I know there's a lot been going on the last few months. And there's a lot of roads that need addressing, but it's kind of bad. And it's a pretty well-traveled road.
We will be putting that back out to bid here for the bigger project, but we can take care of the short-term. But yeah, but that hasn't called off. That is one of our projects we're gonna bid here hopefully in the next 30 days or so. Get that out on the street. Because it'd be a project by itself.
And thank you for the budget presentation. I, I think it just proves to be very helpful for everybody doing that every so often, sort of once a year or twice a year. So I know a lot of work goes into that collaboratively with everybody. So thank you for that. That's all I have. We're gonna get out of here before 11:00. Sorry. That was a joke.
I told the attorney.
That was a joke.
You don't know what Chuck got.
Wait.
Okay, Chuck, it's your turn.
Well, I'm not sure. Margaret, did you say that they were only two foot deep?
I didn't mean to compare with anybody else.
Because, I mean, that's like, that's, you know, we train our little kids on two-foot deep over on 98th Street.
That's why I said I know.
To drive the trucks.
I just wanted to bring it to the attention.
But hey, the, the dirt out here in front, is that finalized? Is that finished? Okay, I'll talk to you about that after, because I got some information for you on that. And the post office, is there, there's some rumor that that post office is going away? And what, what, what requirement, I mean, is it a city, Edwardsville city requirement or of the post office, of the state, of any, that there's a post office in Edwardsville? No.
That, you know, we, we went down this path before when it was damaged. And then they moved and moved boxes over here temporarily. And then they repaired it because they leased that space.
And I don't think that it's the post office's decision to do it.
It's, we took a senator to get it fixed last.
Yeah, yeah. I had not heard that they were looking to close it. Because most of that post, so, so the biggest portion of that post office is to provide post office boxes for the company for public work. Not that for government. I think the inside office part is probably only open two to four hours a day.
Yeah, it's one or 1:30.
Yeah, it's limited already. Generally speaking, the post office has a broadly right, are looking to move their operations into private facilities more and more than where, whether it's a grocery store, UPS stores, things like that, where you just go there and they pay that company to effectively operate the post office.
Well, I just don't know if you've heard anything on that.
But the post office, US Postal Service, the post has in general decides whether or not to de-bill them.
Okay. And I know that I had spoke, I mean, over the last, I don't know how long, about trash pickup, this trash being picked up by either people that are issued community service or, or what have you. But I would still like to see where we're at on getting that accomplished. And it goes hand in hand right now with the COVID. Maybe you do have that person that received the speeding ticket, whatever. Even though our graphs, Zach, how nicely they were put together and colored and easy to follow, didn't show that we were had a reduction in revenue on that by people not paying their fines. But maybe they were, maybe it did create an issue or a hardship for them because they had to pay a fine. I'm not saying that they were guilty or, or they shouldn't have to pay a fine. But maybe the alternative would have been easier for them to swallow if they said, I could have done 10 hours of community service picking up trash in Edwardsville, and then I'm able to buy my kid's X, whatever. So I still would like to make sure that we're, I wanna, I wanna.
I know. So the city attorney and I spent some time on the right mix and things. We just have to get it incorporated into the corporate. I mean, I think there was, the judge was supportive of it, right? So it's, it's not a sentencing piece that was good, but, but to provide it as an alternative. And then it's just.
And I'm not 100% sure about why that's the sentencing part in it, because there are courts and judges all across this country that say yours is this. It's a hundred dollar fine and 10 hours of community service.
You can make it sentencing. You just, and I don't remember the deals in it, but it creates some additional pieces when it's part of a sentence versus saying, here's, a simpler is, you have this fine and, and it's this much money. If you would like to work off your fine, we have this voluntary opportunity for you to do that. Is, and I don't remember all the details. I don't know if these you may recall. But, but there's something different between, yes, can you make it part of a sentencing? You can. They created something. Then you're into community service through community service organizations and. So we were trying to keep it simple by making parks go down the route of volunteer. And it just set, you know, setting up a day, right? If it's a, you know, first Saturday or first Friday of every month for eight hours. Show up this week, we're gonna be at 98th and Kansas picking up trash. Show up at that location. We'll have a city employee meet them there, give them their basket.
And I don't believe that it should just be a city employee. It needs to be a police officer. I mean, these are people that have committed crime.
Well, they're generally trafficking.
But anyway, they seem to have more of an effect on making sure that they're, what is expected of the person doing the pickup respects more of a police officer, I believe, than somebody just standing out there in a, no offense, public works truck. So anyway, I would love to see that take off and figure out how we can utilize that. Our right-of-way mower that we purchased with the arm that come down, I don't know where we're at on running that again. But River View has got to that point again this year that it is needed to run that and get that, not just River View, other streets. But we need to put that on your list of things to look into. So that's all.
I have nothing for, nothing for the VR general.